I will now call to order the October 26, 2023, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Administrator Gary Smith, would you please take the role?
Yes, Chair Smith, thank you. First, our staff support today: Clerk to the Board, Tony Marinick; County Council is Assistant County Council Jeff Muns; Role call Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Here, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you have joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you how to do that when the time is right. A general public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be used in this meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith. First today is the Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Elected Officials Item One: Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Disaster Management Item One: Approval to Apply for a Grant with the U.S. Department of Agriculture for Wildfire Evacuation Zone Preparedness Activities. Grant Value is $400,000 over five years. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Agriculture. No county general funds are involved. Juvenile Item One: Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Youth Authority for Individualized Services. Agreement Value is $76,558 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Youth Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item Two: Approval to Accept the Edward Bynne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant for Skill Groups and Intervention Services. Grant Value is $55,983 over four years. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Justice. No county general funds are involved. Transportation and Development Item One: Approval of a Funding Agreement with the Clackamas County Historical Society to Provide Educational Programs, Preservation of Cultural Artifacts, Heritage, and Historical Archives, and to Manage and Maintain the Facility and Venue. Agreement Value is $100,000 for nine months. Funding is through County Lottery Dollars. No county general funds are involved. Item Two: Approval of Amendment Number Two to an Intergovernmental Agreement with the State of Oregon to Extend the Fire Hardening Grant Program through December 31, 2025. Agreement Value remains at $162,000. Funding through the State of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Health Housing Human Services Item One: Approval of an Intergovernmental Expense Agreement with Multnomah County Integrated Clinical Services to Expand Tobacco Cessation Services. Agreement Value is $20,000 for 20 months. Funding is through Health Share of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item Two: Approval of an Intergovernmental Revenue Agreement with the State of Oregon for the Purchase of Additional Software Modules from First Watch. Agreement Value is $10,075 for two years. No county general funds are involved. Item Three: Approval of a Subrecipient Agreement with North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for Services to Older Adults and Persons with Disabilities at the Milwaukee Community Center. Agreement Value is $430,458 for one year. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services, Federal Transportation Administration, Ride Connection Incorporated, Trimest, and the Oregon Department of Transportation. No county general funds are involved. Item Four: Approval of Amendment Number One: Updating the Scope and Increasing Funding to an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Sandy for Transportation Services to Support Rural Elderly and Disabled Individuals. Amendment Value is $116,000 for eight months. Agreement Value is increased to $413,048 for 15 months. Funding is through the State of Oregon and $55,000 in budgeted county general funds. Item Five: Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for the Oregon Tobacco Quit Line Electronic Referral System. Agreement Value is $6,000 for 12 months. Funding through Health Share of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. County Administration Item One: Approval to Issue a Social Games License to Oregon Poker Club. License Value is $25. Funding through the Oregon Poker Club. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything off of this Consent Agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, move. We approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Second.
Commissioner West has moved we approve the Consent Agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Water Environment Services Board of Directors. Gary.
Next is the Consent Agenda for Water Environment Services. Tony, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Item One: Approval of Amendment Number Two to a Contract with Mitchell's Trenchless Incorporated for Phase Two Design and Construction for the Tri-City Water Resource Recovery Facility Outfall Project. Amendment Value is $58,444,000. Total Contract Value is increased to $60,602,836. Funding is through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item Two: Approval of a Resolution Declaring the Public Necessity and Purpose for Acquisition of Easements and Fee Property and Authorizing Good Faith Negotiations and Condemnation Actions for the Tri-City Water Resource Recovery Facility Outfall Project. Total Value is $121,100. Funding through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from this Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Scholl.
Yes, I move for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Scholl has moved for approval of the Water Environment... Director Scholl has moved for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda, and Director Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Director West.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a Water Environment Services Board and convene as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board of Directors. Gary, what's next?
Next is the Consent Agenda for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Tony, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
One Item: Approval of a Subrecipient Agreement with Clackamas County for Services to Older Adults and Persons with Disabilities at the Milwaukee Community Center. Agreement Value is $430,458 for one year. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services, Federal Transportation Administration, Ride Connection Incorporated, Trimest, and the Oregon Department of Transportation. No county general funds are involved.
Does any Director wish to remove any item off this Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Chair, I move that we approve the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District's Consent Agenda as read.
Second. Director West has moved for approval of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda, and Director Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director West.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. I will now adjourn as a North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Wow. That's 11 minutes into this. We are at public communication already.
The Clackamas County Way.
Commissioners, yeah. Wow. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public comment at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first, and we do have someone here today. Thank you. Her name is Gloria Montez. Would you come forward, please? State your name, your area of residence.
Good morning. I'm Gloria Montez. I live in Canby. Canby, Oregon. So, I'm here today because I would like to express my concern on this voter's pamphlet that was just issued for the upcoming election next month. So, I have a couple of old pamphlet covers that were issued, and this is what they, you know, looked like. Here was a smaller election that came. I know it's kind of hard to see some of these pictures. And so then we elected a new county clerk, and this was from May of the last election. So obviously she's coming and planning to, you know, have images on the cover. So then, coming back to this one, I Googled the word fascism, and then I clicked Images, and on the front page of the images for fascism, these pulled up. And I sure see a whole bunch of similarity, and I think it's disgraceful. And I think that...I don't think there's innocent intent in this imagery, and this looks like propaganda. And that's...that's all I have.
I have received several emails about this. When I was first notified of that, because where I live, there is not a special election. So I did not receive the voter's pamphlet statement, because we're not voting on anything where I live. And I was really taken aback by it, and I was surprised. And I was concerned, because I knew what the reaction would be, and the reaction has been exactly what you say today. I think it's wholly inappropriate for our clerk to put that type of artwork on the front of the voter's pamphlet statement. I hope she is listening today. She is an independently elected official.
Correct.
However, we know what happened to our last clerk, who was an independently elected official. She decided to take her own course and ignored advice from our own county council, the Board of County Commissioners, and our county administrator, and continued on her own path. I would highly suggest that this clerk no longer put that type or any type of artwork that sends messages on the voter's pamphlet statement, because I think it's virtue signaling. I don't like it. Clackamas County is made up of a lot of different political beliefs, and promoting any type of political belief through signaling and artwork is inappropriate. Commissioner West.
My light was on first, Chair.
He can go. It's fine, let him go.
My light was on first. Gloria, thank you for coming in today. I too have received many complaints on the cover. The first complaint came in after the first pamphlets were mailed out. A constituent called me and expressed their concern. Since then, I've received many complaints about it. I think it was on Monday, I communicated my concerns to the clerk. But one thing I want you to know is that artwork, the selection of the cover, never came to the Board for review or approval. Again, the first we saw of it was when constituents received it in the mail. So I hope in the future, we can work with the clerk to come up with something that is less controversial and less political. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner West.
I share your concern. I believe this Board would never have approved anything so politically divisive, that is a political cover with a political specific ideology informing it. It does not make our election process look fair, unbiased, and it really probably continues to foment questions about the election system in Oregon, when many, many voters have just one more thing to really erode at their confidence of the election system or the bias within The clerk is independently and constitutionally elected. I think that this was a massive error on her part, and at the very least, she should not only explain her hyper-partisanship with on the voter pamphlet cover. At the very least, she owes the residents of Clackamas County some reasoning, or I think a flat-out apology on why she would put propaganda that looks more like something that Stalin would put out than something we should ever see here in Oregon or in the United States. Just color that a little orange and a little red, and what do you got? Right? It's not hard. You brought the right photos to compare it to. It is fair that you did that. Yeah, I'm concerned by it. She came before this Board and promised the voters that she would run a very non-controversial, you wouldn't know she's there, clean election system. She prides herself on being of the utmost professionalism, but beneath that veneer is clear partisanship within our elections office. That's not her role, and it hurts Clackamas County and the confidence within our election system. I hope that the citizens and the residents of Clackamas County let her know how they feel. I hope they blow up her phones with calls and with letters and with meetings and with asking for accountability. I hope that they...that she hears their voice in this issue, because we need...you can almost compare the previous picture on the cover to the current picture on the cover. It was Special Elections with the county logo on it that basically was clear what it was. I'm sure it was also more affordable than whatever she had designed. And it was clear, and then now we have something that...the only thing that looks Oregon about it is the trees in the background, but like, everything else about that is really antithetical to our core value system. She's probably done this under the guise of equity. It's probably part of like, a whole entire viewpoint that's informed some of that, and it has that...that imagery has strong socialist ties to it and Marxist ties to it. So I was concerned about it. We talked about it as a Board, but we just don't have any authority here really to deal with this. But she's independently elected, which means you guys can all hold her accountable too, and I hope that a lot of people let her know how they feel about it.
Anything else?
Well, I sure didn't expect you guys to converse with me, so I...to have...yeah. So with that being said, I do have a couple of other...if I really can, go on.
Well, you know, we don't have anybody else in the room, and we're already so far ahead of schedule. If there's anything else you would like to mention, go ahead.
I was hoping my husband would be here so that you could hear his interaction, and we'll see if he gets here in time. But I did have a friend who called and spoke to somebody there, and they responded to her that DEI is of the utmost importance for the elections board. And I am like, and what's that have to do with anything? That this is supposed to be about free and fair elections. My husband went in, and they told him that a black person had designed it, and he no longer works there. I wanted him to be here to say this himself. It's just crazy. Absolutely crazy. So I appreciate you guys' feedback.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
I don't see...
So are you guys done for the day?
Well, yeah, but this is very rare. We are done with this meeting for today.
Not done, though.
Pretty soon, but we have other duties to perform.
Okay. Because my goal with myself is I want to try and come to a monthly meeting, but if this is all it's going to be, maybe I won't.
No, usually we have people coming forward, and we're doing issues or public hearings, and the room has more people in it. But today, it just happens to be a slow day because of the calendar.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I just want to just make a comment, that is, that just in respect for others, especially electeds, fellow electeds, I hope that maybe if there are any questions about that, that you...I just recommend you reach out individually to the clerk and ask her, you know, and see what that was all about. I would just think out of respect, that would be the first step, if there are concerns about that from us, you know, and I appreciate you already had already done that, so. Thank you.
Yep. Commissioner Schrader?
Yes, I would say the same thing. I think this is a conversation with the clerk. I will say on a personal level, I don't think ideologically...my philosophy is not left, not right, but forward, because we have a very pragmatic job. We have to fill potholes. We have to make sure our social service delivery systems are intact. So I often don't read anything else into these kinds of things, because from my perspective, ideology has no place in what we do here as a county commission. So I would encourage you to speak with her. I didn't take it the way you did. I took it as people raising their hands, saying, signaling, "We want you all to come and vote, and come and actually be involved in the electoral process." And it's fine if you don't agree with me, that's great. But I will tell you that I think that there are more than one interpretations to this, and I...that was not the message I got. And I haven't heard any complaints, quite frankly. I haven't been, you know...but then again, I don't...I live, you know, I live in Lake Oswego, and that is not, you know...I moved from Canby. And I don't...no one there really seemed to have an issue. So I would talk to Catherine.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming today.
I see no other in-person testimony today. Tony, we will move to Zoom online. Is there anybody online who wishes to testify?
If you would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised at this time.
Thank you, Tony. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary Smith, what's next?
Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I like to use this time to share the good news of our...good work our county employees do every day. Today, I wanted to recognize our employees in the Transportation Maintenance Division of the Department of Transportation and Maintenance, who quickly responded to a community member who reported that trash was being illegally dumped on a walkway near the intersection of Otty Road and Southeast 91st Avenue. Children use that walkway, and there was a lot of broken glass and other debris in the walkway. So a member of the public emailed our Transportation Division staff, and they responded within 48 hours and cleaned it up. And that person wrote back to us, "Thank you so much for the creative and quick response to this environmental as well as aesthetic dumping issue. The barriers were placed today and should deter those..." Now, the word the person wrote, I'm not going to repeat, but "people who illegally dump. I'm also grateful for the cleanup of the trash. Amazing response time. Thank you so much. I think it was cleaned up in less than 48 hours of my initial email to you," which it was. So thank you to the person who wrote to us, and thank you to our Transportation Maintenance Division, who do so much work to help our roadways and our walkways for members of the public. Some announcements for you, Commissioners and the public. As you know, you know, Commissioners, next week there is no business meeting. Next Thursday, November 2nd, there will not be a Board Business Meeting, because you will all be attending the Regional Housing Summit in Portland. As well, is there is no business meeting the following Thursday, November 8th, because that's the day the county observes Veterans Day, but the meeting will be the day before. Wednesday, November 8th, at 10:00 a.m. will be the Board Business Meeting. So no meeting next week. The next Board Business Meeting is Wednesday, November 8th at 10:00 a.m. That's my update for today. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Gary. Now, it's time for Commissioner Communication. First, Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, I actually have some pretty interesting things to mention today. Yesterday in particular, I attended the Oregon Business and Industry Event in Portland, where they usually give their awards to businesses who have done remarkable things. And one of the businesses, and one of the groups that got an award was businesses from Bordenan with their school district and their colleagues, because they pulled together as businesses to make sure that their folks have childcare, because they were finding out that people weren't working, because they didn't have that asset. So for me, that was really a positive look in the right direction, because when you get your major industries in Oregon and in the region, like Boeing and just all the big guys were there, you know, Stoll Reeves, all these larger groups that provide prosperity and jobs here, beginning to see this as something that they want to investigate, because they want to make sure that they have employees who can come to work, get to work, and feel safe that their children are being taken care of. And as I've said before, we have some major industries here in this community. Daimler for one, Siemens, that do provide on-campus childcare. And I've taken the time to visit, I know I've mentioned this before, to a number of the kinder care facilities. And one of the things I found out from our conversation with the HUD folks, Housing and Urban Development, yesterday, kinder care is actually one of the largest businesses in our state, not just Clackamas County, that actually provides these services. And it's been interesting how everything's coming together, because I look at it as also providing jobs. So everybody, so people who are into daycare, early childcare development, early learning, you know, actually have those positions, and everybody, it's a win-win. So I'm going to continue looking into that and investigating it and seeing what happens. I know that we also all attended, I think we did, the Oregon City Business Alliance, where we had a panel on water. It was a great panel, Water and Environment Services, and how important water is, and despite the fact that we have a lot of rain here in Oregon, do not assume that we have enough water, that the infrastructure that we have for cleaning water, for surface water management, and for drinking water are essentials for anything that we do here in this county. And I always say, you know, it's as important as our transportation, actually, I think in many ways, because if you don't have adequate water management and water supply, then you cannot grow your businesses, you cannot have healthy families, and, you know, it just goes on and on and on. So I thought that was a great opportunity. And today, I think we're going, I think many of us are going to the court-appointed Services Casa lunch today, and I'm looking forward to that. And those are the folks who work with children, who are part of a court system, and they become their advocates. There's...they're really a great group, and I keep hoping if and when I ever retire, I can...I can maybe volunteer with that group myself. So that's what I have today, folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah, thank you. Just want to...it's more of a coming...yesterday I had a business meeting with some folks from Illinois, and been working on it for several months, and they're in the same industry that I was in. And having a long conversation about the labor pool and our employees, and it resonates with me, because ever since I first, you know, had my first job, and several jobs, and my first...started my business in 1980, having employees and being an employer since 1980, and now in my elected roles, special districts here at the county, I think the value of relationships, the value of your labor pool, your value of your relationships with your constituents, all of that, treating people with respect and valuing people is so important. You know, the morale in your business organization in particular was the topic yesterday, to try to keep people, you know, good people, and they've done an exceptional job. They have people that are...most of their staff are...have 20... They have people that are most of their staff are have 20 to 30 years experience. It's not always easy, turnover in some areas, but trying to get people necessarily in this industry is not easy in and of itself. But I think the one thing that resonates with me is, is, you know, we've, you know, in the last year or so, we've seen, you know, a number of people for a number of reasons, you know, not any, but a number of people leave the county and it's with sometimes it's with, you know, sadness that you lose someone with has some great skill sets and brings a lot of value to the county. And I just, you know, just coming off the the thoughts prior to unrelated to what, you know, my discussion yesterday and going forward, I just think it's something that we need to take a step back and especially as elected leaders or business owners, there's one thing that we need to be cognizant of, you know, whether you like it or not, even when when a person who goes from the field as a field worker to management, there's resentment of or fear of, you know, your bosses, right? And whatever whatever that takes. And we have to be, we have to recognize that, that we have to, you know, be human and be sensitive to that and not take not not take anything, you know, personal, but be above that and be be leaders. And I think, again, it's important to try to work hard to value your employees and value the people and your constituents and treat all people with respect. And I just wanted to say that that morale is something that I worked very, very hard on. I considered my employees family and and not that they were family, but treated them like family. So it's just just important. And and this organization has a lot of people and I have tremendous respect for a lot of the people who work here and the skill sets they bring and and I hope that we can be an inviting place to in the future to fill the vacancies we have, whether it's, you know, in planning or it's the road department or whether it is the sheriff's department, trying to get recruit people. And even even people in related industries who are not employees of the county, like our emergency responders, you know, we're having, you know, AMR, one of the emergency providers is having struggles trying to bring people in for a number of economic reasons as well. But a lot of it, you know, when people enjoy where they work, they are sometimes willing to sacrifice maybe other amenities or desires that might keep them there. And I think that relationships can prove to be very valuable. But so my my message today is value and respect others for what they bring and do our best to mentor others to be better. Thank you, Chair. That's all I have today.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County. On this last business meeting before Halloween. This week, the board had the privilege of attending the ribbon cutting ceremony at the new Clackamas County Transportation Maintenance Facility. I'm happy to report to you that the $34 million investment in that new facility, I believe, is a very good value that will serve the people of this county for 100 years, probably. And as you drive the 1,400 miles of Clackamas County roads, take a moment to be appreciative of the hundreds of Clackamas County employees who work out of this facility to keep those roads safe. And I would like to say thank you to the truck drivers, the pavers and all the different functions that occur at the maintenance facility. Thank you all for your work. On K through 12 schools, next week, the Portland School teachers threatened to go on strike. I'm very concerned about this. I'm very concerned that a strike might extend into the school districts in our county. The K through 12 students in school now are still struggling from the results of the COVID shutdowns and having to learn at home. If you look at your property taxes, you'll find that maybe upwards of 30% of your taxes go to fund our public schools. The problem is that in many of our school districts, the number of teachers are are overburdened by too many students because the employees are not all students. Like, for example, in Portland, Portland School District of 8,700 employees, only 3,800 are teachers. And so classes can get very large. So again, I appeal to the teachers of the Portland School District to please try to settle out of court. Our kids need to stay in school. Also, Oregon is rather unique when it comes to K through 12 education in that the governor of Oregon appoints the Oregon Superintendent of Schools and the governor also appoints all the members of the state school board. So again, parents, stay active and let's do what we can to keep those kids in school. Also, we need to get back to basic mastery of reading, writing and math in order to graduate, in order to graduate for all kids, regardless of who they are and what family they came from. On taxes, the tax I'd like to talk to you about this week is the corporate activity tax, a tax that is seen as contrary to a business. Difficult to attract new businesses to this state with a tax like this cat tax. As you might know already, the cat tax is a tax on businesses that have activity of over $1 million. That includes C corporations, S corporations, partnerships, LLCs and sole proprietorships. And so I've received many complaints from constituents who have small businesses who do have commercial activity in excess of $1 million. And this cat tax is cutting in on the already slim profit margins of many of our small businesses. So I encourage everybody, once again, talk to your state representative, your state senator, and let's see what we can do. This cat tax is counterproductive to good jobs in Oregon. And I think with that today, I wish you all a good afternoon.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Commissioner West, you're up.
Ms. Montez, I just want to take a second to thank you for being a good watchdog for Clackamas County and trying to make sure that that we live up to a very high standard in how we represent the public in every single department within this county. I know that you're engaged, you you love your home and where you live. I I believe you're from Canby. And I know you and others are working hard to keep our community welcoming, safe, clean, livable and to not have some of the effects that we've seen from surrounding areas that that aren't maybe governed as well as we are. So thank you for your advocacy today. I have been out the last two weeks. I took some very important time with some family that hasn't been well and it was really an epic, special time that I'll never forget. So I appreciate having that opportunity and thank you to my colleagues for helping fill in in the places where I wasn't able to be here. I know that when a lot of us are even out of town or gone, we're not really totally on vacation. I mean, Gary got lots of calls from me in the in the middle of nowhere with bad cell coverage, as I still try to keep my pulse on what's going on in the county because none of us really ever get to turn it off, no matter where we're at, whether we're sitting in the office at our desk or whether we're going all over this county to do very important work. And some of that work I want to talk about today is Clackamas County, I just want to keep saying it, has really been a spearhead and a leader in inspiring other local governments here in Oregon on the addiction and homelessness issue. I've, today I will meet with, tonight I have dinner with Representative Travis Nelson out of North Portland. We're going to talk about this issue. We couldn't be more ideologically opposed in many areas, but maybe as a nurse to a nurse, we can talk about some common grounds to help this issue moving forward. I think I have five or six legislative meetings next week all over the state, so I won't, maybe I won't be here, but I'll be at those legislative meetings as they're asking for our input after the District 8 meeting that we just had on how Clackamas County and what that Clackamas County way is how we address this. So maybe we can help work with those legislators to just maybe get some fixes to Measure 110. As I was sitting here, Deschutes County just sent me a text message with their letter, their bipartisan letter, asking for a lot of the same fixes that we've been asking for. Our work inspired, I believe, Deschutes County. Tomorrow I'll be in Salem with some of the Marion County County Commissioners along with AOC, as Clackamas County and Marion County are kind of the thought leaders on this countywide and we're trying to have a robust AOC response into the short session as we deal with Measure 110. All this stuff behind the scenes, I keep saying, like Clackamas County, once again on big issues, is showing real leadership, like really moving real policy forward in the room where the where the sausage is made, right? And and because we've been so pragmatic, because we've we've marched the ball down the field so methodically and and in a really solid way, our voice has value and credibility. Our credentialing matters. And so we have a voice at this table where maybe we haven't always had a voice at the table. So I really appreciate the work of my colleagues as we run around this entire state to try to like do the work of the people and not, and this is a big county, too. So I know we, I know we're all scattered across it as as commissioners. We all kind of are in a different pocket, but it's exciting to see what's going on. It's going to be an incredibly busy week, the next couple of weeks. But I I think that that's important to report some of the things that are going on that are, I think, show are how exceptional we've been in some of this in some of these areas. So I'll say that and I I appreciate all my colleagues here and 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 thank you, I think, in the last 10 months for working as a unit to really show strong leadership in this policy priority around addiction and homelessness. You guys have been phenomenal and and like I said yesterday, we're just getting started.
I just want, the chair is going to give me a moment because I was at OBI the other day and David Brock Smith, who was a county commissioner, yeah, he just thinks you're the greatest thing since sliced bread, man. And I thought I had to tell you that. He goes, wow, you really like that guy. And I was like, yeah, you can't stop him.
A little bit of a worry derby, but.
Yeah, yeah, it's been, it's been fun working with you. And a lot of the, I think that a lot of the Association of Oregon Counties things that you have initiated is really helping AOC, too. So but but David Brock made a comment, he goes, yeah, we like you. You guys, yeah.
Thank you. It's very humbling. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner West. Yes, on Tuesday, we attended the Transportation Services Building ribbon cutting and it was a marvelous, marvelous time to be with our county road crew and and all the people out there who keep our roads operational. They do phenomenal work. It was very fun to see the new construction and they have a nice place to work and that's important. And Commissioner Savas, you talked about morale. They were working in some not too good of situation down at the other place. And I do think a facility like this does aid in the productivity in the mindset of our employees. And it was built without increasing taxes. Different pots of money came in to fund that facility. It came in on time and under budget. $40,000 was left over that our director said would be used for county roads. So if you drive over a pothole, call the pothole hotline because we have more money to fix those. We have some money for potholes. Thank you very much. Last week, I, at the end of the week, I spoke at the Milano Hamlet out at Milano in my backyard at the Milano Airport. And it was a good group of people and they, ahead of time, they wanted to talk about county roads, the funding for county roads, our budget and tolling. And so thankfully, we had the briefing on the vehicle registration fee and I had these wonderful maps that the department made. And I took the maps and says, here, here's the schedule of everything that we're doing. If you have any questions, call us. And they loved it. They wanted to know about how our budget works and I told them about that. And they were, most of the conversation revolved around tolling. And even now in Milano, in our rural areas, because a lot of people in this particular crowd drive trucks and they have businesses where they're going in and out of the tolling area and they're pretty much opposed to it. And and a constant theme was, why should we have to pay more for the roads you've already paid for? Just letting you know that. This last week, we also had a mayor's and chair meeting and it was a very good meeting, a very good conversation because I invited Vaheed Brown and Adam Brown to attend regarding our SHS dollars. And I have been saying to the mayors, look, there's this money available. Do you have ideas? You need to come to us because frankly, your mayors are wonderful, but I can't read your mind and what you want in your cities because every city is different. So we had a wonderful conversation. They presented some in a way that I really couldn't. I just facilitated the conversation. And so I think the mayors are looking at it more positively. And one of the mayors said, he says, I appreciate your staff so much. They are so good to work with, they're responsive, we get what we want when we need it and they're all shaking their heads, yes. So I want to thank our, another part of our staff for doing that. Your property tax bills has hit your mailbox. In case you're wondering, our assessor Bronson Rueda is going to come before this board, I think, next week, I can't remember, next week or the week after, and give us a briefing on the state of the property taxes. Tax collection increases or collections in Clackamas County have increased by 5.8%, which is larger than projected. One of the reasons for that is the local option levies. The Clackamas Fire increased their taxes, voter approved, by 52 cents per thousand on that. And there was a couple of other smaller levy options, I think out in Sherwood, that had increased people's taxes there. Another reason for the increase in taxes was $1.4 billion in new construction come to our county. And I think what's me rolling up for the next couple of years on the new construction, those units and housing will come online and we will be the beneficiaries of that, which is good because projections were that the tax revenues coming in will be fairly flat. But we'll see exactly what this 5.8% increase means when our assessor comes before us and gives us a briefing. Just wanted to know that. We did not raise your taxes. We don't do that at the board level. Any tax increase comes from either new construction or voter-approved measures. Just want to say that. Yes, seeing no further business before this commission, we are adjourned and thank you all.